We'll call this meeting to order, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dodge? Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm quite excited. We have two presentations today, and the first one is our Culture Works kickoff. So, Michael London and Rita Harden, will you please come up to the podium?
Sure, sure. So, every year, every year we have the Culture Works campaign, we have three workplace-giving campaigns. And we're excited. You know, we all know the last, the last couple of years have been difficult. I mean, you know, for everybody with all kinds of different things. So, we've done a number of different things this year. We don't have a completely virtual campaign like we had last year. We have some things in person. We know some people are able to get together again. We have some artists that you're going to find here in the building as it comes later on. But our goal is really to try and do our best to be as inclusive as we can of as many, many people in the workforce. And what we want to be able to do is really pretty simple. We want them to be aware of Culture Works. We want them to be aware of the campaign for the arts. We want them to be aware of what the benefits are for them in that campaign. And there are a lot of benefits by joining. And so, we have a number of different things that we've done. We've expanded the Steering Committee. I think we have thirty?
Thirty.
Thirty people now on the Steering Committee. So, the Prosecutor's Office is with us this year. I mean, we have all kinds of folks that are with us this year. Yes, yes, yes. We're really glad. We've also changed some other things. So, we have sort of an incentive-driven campaign. The incentives we've had in the past have been very much that if you join, you get two-for-one tickets all year, right? That's a pretty big incentive. But this year, we're doing something else. You know how we do a lot of raffles and all of that? No raffles. Every single day, there's a drawing. We have businesses that have contributed all throughout the community that have contributed all kinds of prizes. Every single day, there's a drawing. If you join in at any point, so if you're not in yet, today's the day to get in because we've already had two winners, which I'll tell you about. So, every day, we'll have at least one winner, sometimes two or three, all kinds of prizes that have been donated. So, we're looking at that. We're saying, "Get in, get in now" to be able to get the numbers. We really want those people that are working for the county who are, are not in the workplace all the time because some of us are working hybrid schedules, especially with JFS. We know that, so we really are trying to reach out to as many people as possible. So, we have a number of other components. We have an auction. I think you saw, last year, we had a wonderful art auction. We had all kinds of artists from the community. This year, all of the artists are county employees. And so, that campaign is up. We've got the artwork in. We'll be hanging it this Friday. At, it'll be on display at the downtown Dayton Metro Library. And you can even drive by and see it because it'll be on display in the, at the corner of Patterson, in the room that's on the corner of Patterson and Third. And everybody can join in on that art auction. And, and there's others. I think I'm gonna go to one of the next one. Yeah, Rita, talk to us about this.
This year, we're going to have the Bowl for the Art Event again. And we have renamed it the Doreen Ragsdale Memorial Annual Bowl in honor of Ms. Doreen, who was our previous campaign coordinator. And it is going to take place on May 21st from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And Carl Keith is gonna be our emcee again, so it's sure to be a blast. Everyone's gonna have fun.
We'll have fun.
We have a room for up to twenty teams, and a team consists of at least four people. And we're opening up to family and friends again. And families can invite their children to bowl with them, so there can be parents and children to make up a team. So, that'll be good for anyone who can't have a babysitter or whatever. It's gonna be family-friendly. We're gonna have a fifty-fifty raffle, and we're gonna have various prizes throughout the day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Administrator's Team will lead the way again.
Are you sure? I heard some challenges. But do that. I know that there's some supervisors that have told me that they're going to use it as a team-building time and just a time for some of their staff to be together and their staff's family and, and things like that. So, so take advantage of that. The flyers are going out on that right away. The other thing, as I mentioned, we're doing, if I can get this to work. Oh, look, I did that wrong. You did great, Rita. We've got all different kinds of prizes. So, in addition to tickets to all kinds of things, they've got gift cards and all different things that they've, like I said, that have been donated. So, every day, there is a winner. So, yes, so far, Ruth Cobert, who's a JFS employee, who's already joined. And all you have to do to be in on this is join. So, if you join anyhow, or you're thinking about it, get in early because once you're in, you're in for every single day. So, you can win every single day, or you can win, your name's not taken out if you win. So, Ruth Cobert won the first day, and yesterday's winner was Kevin La Boy. So, Kevin, Kevin will get hit. You didn't know that. I haven't told anybody.
You didn't tell anybody, Kevin. You're supposed to share that gift with somebody.
And he didn't have anything to do with pulling the winners on that.
What did he win?
Actually, I think on yours, he won, we have different prizes. His was a, a large, like tote bag that was offered by Sam's Club that you use for shopping at Sam's Club or wherever you wanna shop. I think some, the other prize, somebody got a, a free prize from, trying to remember which. It was an eatery, a sandwich of some kind of coupon, plus they got a mouse pad, you know. So, right now, this first week, they're not the big, big ones, but some of the prizes are well over, worth over $200. And we have a range, but every single day. So, if you're in once, you're in for the whole week, the whole month. And then, we have another fundraiser.
We're having various dine and donate options throughout the month, so it's not just for one day, one week. It's throughout the whole month, and there's various restaurants that are participating. And of course, we get a percentage of the sales when they go to have dinner, lunch. We get a, a percentage of the sales that will go towards our campaign. And we, we're trying to have something at least once or twice each week during the month, and it goes through. We have June 1st, Chipotle will be on June 1st, so it's something for everyone throughout the month.
Yeah, so if you think about it, you get the list, you know, if you're gonna go out to eat, just stop at one of these because it not only supports the businesses that are supporting us, but it, it raises funds for the campaign, and those funds go in listed under Montgomery County. It's part of what we're doing. Yes, you could do it online. Some people are ordering online. The other thing that we did last year, because of the pandemic, and we, we weren't allowed to see each other very much, we, we started on a Wednesday afternoon at lunchtime. We're doing it this year again because it was, it was really popular last year. And it's just artists among us. And we know that among all the employees in the county, there's a lot of artists. So, we discovered a lot of artists then, and we said, that's when we said, "Let's go ahead and make this next year's campaign when we do the art auction their work." And so, we've done that. So, we've all donated work, including, Tom's not here, so I can't make fun of Tom, but I can, you know, because he said, so Tom donated a piece, Tom Kelly. It's really cool. Yeah, and the challenge was is that he would if I would, so I did too. So, there were a number of them, just some really, really talented artists. And this is a chance for artists to get to know each other. And all we do is we meet on Zoom, we meet at lunch. You just bring your lunch, and we introduce, and we, everybody learns about the other work that somebody doing. We have quilters, we have painters, we have potters, we have all kinds of people who are artists that work for this county. And this is just a chance to sort of celebrate and share with each other, and so, we're doing that, okay? I think that's it. Questions?
No, but I think it sounds, you always make it, I don't know how you're gonna make it better, but adding, and so the creativity is in, even in the event plan.
We have a, I have to tell you that we really have a great Steering Committee, and they keep coming up with really great ideas, and Rita and I are like, "That sounds good." Yeah. No, it really has been. So, this year, I did, two things I would leave you with is, if you're gonna be a supporter of Culture Works, do so, and do so early. Online, just go right online. The links are out there. Join. And then, be in for all the other prizes that are coming. And then, the second thing I would tell you is, get your teams together. We'll see you on May the 21st.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Rita.
Absolutely.
All right, and our second presentation is our Environmental Learning Center Virtual Tour. So, Jamie Shepherd.
Thank you very much. Let's get mine pulled up here. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Jamie Shepherd, I'm the Education Program Specialist for Montgomery County Environmental Services, and I am here today to talk a little bit about our brand-new, state-of-the-art virtual tour of the Environmental Learning Center. So, just a little bit of a history on the project. The Environmental Learning Center opened on the Solid Waste Campus in Moraine in 2014, and since its opening, we have had about 3,400 visitors every single year through that facility. We do have, although the building is designed for school-aged children, we do have visitors that come from all over the Miami Valley, from edu, from educational service centers, from institutes of higher learning, from the civic community, from the business community. And all of this makes the Environmental Learning Center truly a regional asset on environmental sustainability. Unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 pandemic in the state of Ohio, we did have to cancel in-person tours beginning in March of 2020. At this time, our staff realized that we were going to have to get very creative in how we were able to continue our mission and continue to serve the schoolchildren and really the residents of Montgomery County. So, we sat down, often virtually at this point in time, and really began brainstorming and came up with an idea to do a virtual tour of the center so that if students couldn't come to us, we would be able to go to them. Although tours were able to resume in person in June of 2021, schools still face significant challenges in coming to us largely due to transportation restrictions and busing shortages. So, the Environmental Learning Center Virtual Tour provides access to students who are unable to tour the site in person, and it also provides additional resources to educators here in the Miami Valley and elsewhere. The site was created by a team at Trivium Interactive with the team at Environmental Services, serving as content matter experts. And it can be accessed through both a link on the Solid Waste website as well as by typing www.tourelc.com into your browser. The ELC Virtual Tour features three-dimensional Matterport photography, so you can actually walk through the building virtually, just as if you were in the building in person. We have some fun and colorful animations and videos for students to explore. We have interactive games and activities. And we've also included interviews with our Environmental Services staff so that students can learn what it's really like to work for Environmental Services. The Virtual Tour did debut publicly on April 21st, 2022. In honor of Earth Day, we had a group of students come out from Bear Elementary in Miamisburg. They absolutely loved it. And since the tour's completion, we've actually had more than 900 visitors from nine countries, and we've received over 4,700 total page views. So, the site has been very successful so far.
That's cool.
So, a couple photographs of our Virtual Tour debut. We did have all three of our commissioners there. The kids loved seeing you all, so thank you very much for coming to that event. The students from Bear Elementary were able to tour the site in person. They were presented with the Virtual Tour online, so they had a chance to check that out. And of course, they got to meet Kirby the Cardinal, who is the mascot over at Solid Waste. So, let's check out the Virtual Tour. I know a lot of folks in the room have already seen this, but for everyone who hasn't, it's really a fun way to learn more about the work being done at Environmental Services. So, it starts out with a little video where Kirby the Cardinal shows you how to interact in the space. And then, with the Virtual Tour, this is where we get into the three-dimensional Matterport photography. Oh, we have to click End Show. And a big thank you to our Communications Department, who has been helping me with the technical end of this since its inception. Perfect. Thank you so much, Megan. All right, so that three-dimensional Matterport photography that you can see here allows our visitors to walk through the site just as if they were at the ELC in person. And of course, Kirby the Cardinal, our mascot, is there every step of the way, showing visitors how to interact in the space. So, in our Virtual Tour, and no stop to the ELC is ever complete without viewing our viewing corridor, where you can see the waste being pushed around on the tipping floor. And in this space, we have some videos that allow participants to explore further. So, let's meet some of the team.
One thing I love about my job is working with a, a team of coworkers that are dedicated to hauling the refuse to make this world a better and safer place for years to come.
I love just looking at the amount of waste that we divert from the landfill. It helps our, keep our environment clean and safe for our citizens.
We provide a place for people to drop off their garbage and waste and keep the community and the rest of the environment clean.
So, we get to hear a few words from Environmental Services staff. Now, another key component of every visit to the Environmental Learning Center is a tour of our interactive classroom, where we have fun games and activities for students to explore. So, I'm gonna demo one of those games today. A crowd favorite is always our recycling game, where participants are challenged to sort recyclable from non-recyclable items. We'll see how I'm doing on this. But today, we are rad recyclers, so we've done pretty well with this. Now, in our Virtual Tour, we also have a whole list of activities, games, videos that students can do both in and out of the classroom. We don't just cover recycling. We also cover wastewater. We cover some information on energy. And we also have a section dedicated specifically to teacher resources, so there's a guide to show teachers how to use this site in the classroom. All right, do we have any questions about the Virtual Tour project?
No, I, I don't have questions. I have comments. I love the one video on there that shows all the trash coming. It's like a sped-up one.
The time lapse.
And like over a hundred trucks come in in a day.
I thought that was cool. Yeah, that really shows the, the impact of the services that we're providing.
Yes, and as I was telling you before the meeting, we are talking with our Halan Israel Sister City, and our topic is trash this coming month. And I, John Manier and I are going to share this as well because they were asking, "How do you educate the public, starting with your young people?" So, I think we provide a fine example that, as you said, anyone around the world can access. And I'll certainly be having my grandchildren in Denver and Baltimore try out the game.
Thank you. Well, definitely feel free to check out the site. It is up there and live to the public.
Well, you've done a fantastic job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. Now, the schools now are gonna be, you know, closing for the summer. What are you gonna do about, do you have like scouting trips that come?
Yes, so in the, in the summer, the Environmental Learning Center moves towards servicing the summer camp and daycare community. So, we are starting to schedule those programs. And as we are scheduling onsite programs, we're also using that as an opportunity to promote this Virtual Tour. Environmental Services also does a number of outreach events in the summer, so we're going out to the community. And we have iPads so that we can take the tour to every outreach event that we attend.
Nice. Thank you.
Very cool. All right. Thank you, thank you. County Engineer?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We have three resolutions today. The first is Resolution 22-711, to authorize an agreement with Fishbeck for Engineering Services for the Social Rural Road Project Phase Two at a cost not to exceed $347,945 through June 30th of 2026. And 712 is to authorize a cost-sharing agreement with the City of Franklin for the final design phase of the Dayton Cincinnati Pike retaining wall project in the City of Franklin and in Miami Township. And 713 is to set the date of May 24th, 2022 for the viewing and June 7th, 2022 for the hearing on the airway road bridge replacement project in the City of Riverside.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. County Sheriff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 714. Apply for a grant for, from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Traffic Safety Office, for funding of the High Visibility Enforcement Overtime Program.
I move for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Clerk of Courts?
Under the Clerk of Courts, we have Resolution 715, amend the software maintenance agreement with Courtview Justice Solutions, Inc., DBA equivalent, for Courtview application software through December 31st, 2026 by reducing the annual cost of the agreement with the first year reduction in the amount of $29,432. We also have two authorization of purchases for the Clerk of Court's server replacement project, Resolution 716, or Net for Computer Software, and annual support in an amount not to exceed $150,000. And Resolution 717, Dell Marketing LLP, for computer hardware and annual maintenance in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
A little different.
Yeah.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. County Administrator?
Under the County Administrator, under the Clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on April 26th, 2022. Resolution 718, approval bills. And Resolution 719, approval travel and expenses. Both of those lists are available in the Clerk's office.
I move for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Hang on, I lost my screen. Administrative Services. All right, I'll go ahead and just look at hers. Administrative Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have several resolutions for your consideration. The first is 720. This is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the Clerk's office. 721 selects the bid and authorizes an agreement with CG Egley Incorporated, Mechanical Contractor, for the historic Courthouse Boilers Replacement Project at their lowest and best bid of $194,000 through December 31st of 2022. 722 amends the intergovernmental agreement with the Regis Commission to provide development and database services for Justice Web by adding $895,520 to the original amount for a visal of $1,164,120 and extending the term through December 31st of 2023. 723 authorizes a change order to the agreement with Wise Construction Company, General Contractor, for the Administration Building Eighth Floor Engineers' Office and Restroom Renovation Project by extending the term through June 30th of 2022. 724 terminates the agreement with the Greater Dayton Area Hospital Association for the Cooperative Use of Decontamination Trailers and Equipment. 725 rejects the proposal for broadband consulting services for the Office of Strategic Initiatives and Re-advertise. The following two resolutions solicit bids. The first is 726 for the Administration Building Ninth Floor Renovation Project at an estimated cost not to exceed $1,801,600. And 727 is for the Administration Building Restrooms Renovation Project at an estimated cost of $1,949,100. The last three resolutions request proposals. The first is 728 for banking services for the Treasurer's Office. 729 is for basic skills and instructional services for the Business Services Department. And the last, Resolution 730, for a hazmat vehicle for the Risk, Safety, and Emergency Management Department.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. OMB?
Good afternoon. We have one resolution, number 731, to authorize an agreement with Ohio State University Extension, Montgomery County, for purposes prescribed in ORC Section 3335.36 at a cost not to exceed $215,163 through December 31st, 2022.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Human Services?
We will start with Resolution 732, authorizing an agreement with the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services to accept a sub-grant award for the Child Assessment Needs and Strengths, also known as CANS, in the amount of $60,000 through June 30th, 2022. We then have sixteen substitute care agreements, beginning with Resolution 733, Better Beginnings for a Brighter Future, 730, Future for Youth. And I did confirm those are two different. Pathways Transitional Homes, 736, Just Like 737, L Strong Group Home, 738, Mended Reads, 739, NICA's Group Home, 740, OCEC Foundation, 741, Cincinnati Children's College Hill Campus, 742, Keystone Richland Center, Doing Business as Foundations for Living, 743, Perimeter Behavioral of the Ozarks, 744, Rich Meyer Therapeutic Home, 745, State of Missouri, Woodridge of Missouri, Doing Business as Piney Ridge Center, 746, The Bear Foundation, 747, Willow Branches of Healing, and 748, Woodridge Northeast.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Business Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Under Business Services, Workforce Development, Resolution 0749, authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the Business Services Department, Montgomery County Office of Reentry, and Monday Community Correctional Institute to provide collaborative assistance to individuals in making a successful transition from incarceration to employment through the Pathway Home Grant. And under Community and Economic Development, we have Resolution 750, amend the Economic Development Government Equity Edge Agreement with the City of Union for the Bolt Titan Project by amending the percentage to the total project cost of 3.125%.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All right, we have comments by citizens, and the first one is Willie Feaster. Mr. Feaster? Come to the podium, and you'll have three minutes.
I can start. Willie Feaster, no address. Let, I'm gonna continue my comments, discussion about Montgomery County Jail. After the meeting last week, I spoke with my Commissioner Liverman, and I asked her, "Would she be inclined to, to, uh, meet with me, try to make a meeting with me and the sheriff about to get to the county jail?" So, Ms. Liverman, County Commissioner Liverman said, "Well, uh, uh-huh. I'm gonna pass you on down to, to Ms. Piner, Amy Piner, my assistant." So, I talked with Ms. Piner because I'm serious about this here. You know, only reason I, I did this is because Ms. Liverman talks about how dedicated and sincere Sheriff Streck is about because this is the county jail. But I understand, me, I'm just a nobody. I ain't, I ain't all that. I'm just a little old citizen. So, you don't really get, now, you know, I ain't no president like Joe Biden. He called, everybody jumped. Governor White called today, all y'all jumped, you know, to be getting a boat wet. So, I'm just a little nobody. So, I just get passed down, passed down, passed down. So, I'm stuck. Now, Ms. Piner says she did make a phone call in my behalf, Sunderson. She's waiting on a response, but I'm gonna say this, and I said it before. Ms. Liverman, because you spoke about the county jail, they getting ready to build or proposing to build, it really don't mean nothing. If you don't change your mindset, the culture, it's gonna be the same people. You put a $500 million county jail across the street today, it's the same staff, the same people that's gonna run that jail. When do you change the mindset of the people that run the county jail? That's what is gonna count. It ain't how pretty and shiny a jail look, but if I go in there with the same mindset and the same culture, it's gonna be the same abuse. When is that gonna occur? You know what I'm talking about. It start with Streck, and it comes on down to the commanders and the people. You know what I'm talking about? It start with Streck, and it comes on down to the commanders and the people. Yeah, he is the head, but when is that gonna get in that part of it? That got to be addressed. It's the culture. It's the culture and the mindset of the people that daily sits over there and run that. So, once again, I'm asking, on there, Ms. Liverman, Amy Piner, whoever, can we please somehow get to meet with somebody in the sheriff's office? No one ain't gonna be Streck. I, I'm just a nobody. I can't get to him. So, what about a sergeant? Can I get to a sergeant? I mean, he's the bottom of the tope. We ain't talking about a lieutenant. We ain't talking about a captain, a major. Can we get a sergeant? I know you can't answer that. I know Ms. Piner told me she has inclined. She's trying to get this arranged.
Thank you, Mr. Feaster.
Thank you.
She is trying to get it arranged, Willie.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Feaster. And our second is Marion Perry.
Good afternoon. I have some questions I really need answered by the county. Dayton has this rule, but Montgomery County doesn't. We have some neighbors. If you go out in Jefferson Township and you see the call log, I'm not the only one that calls the sheriff on these people. The house number is fifty-ninety-one. They're always doing something. Let's see, I think Sunday, it was nice and warm. They brought out ATVs. Now, in Dayton, if you ride an ATV, all that lovely noise, moped, anything, motorized, they're gonna get the person off the bike and take it. In Jefferson Township, you call, because most of the people that have not been moved or whatever, because, like I said, Jefferson is now being attacked by sharks, preferably when I mean shark, sharks, I mean people, constantly calling the older people, asking them if they wanna sell their house. They get the house, they pay them little or nothing to get them out of the house, they flip it, they renovate it, they rent it to younger people. You still have older people out there. I'm in my sixties. I won't say what number, but I'm in my sixties. I have neighbors that have no respect for us, and that's the house I just told you about. They have pit bulls, have cane corso's, they have bad kids, they do a lot of different things, I've mentioned before, and nobody will do anything about them. Call the sheriff, he'll come out. When they have a big party, he'll come out, late night, sit in a circle, which is why burn, look and see what's going on. Of course, they're having a big party, and they're selling product. And when I say product, I'm not spelling what I mean by product, but the product is not legal. Okay. We are trying. Everybody in the area knows my street, virtually, because they make noise, their dogs, the noise, no peace. All I want at night is to be able to sleep. One night, I had to call the sheriff, because it was in March. She had one of her pit, no, excuse me, cane corso dogs out, and that dog barked all night long. Now, let me explain something about the houses. They are not very insulated. So any noise you hear, you're gonna hear it. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Comments by our county administrator?
Thank you, commissioners. I'd like to remind everyone today that our diverse vendor outreach event is Thursday, this Thursday, from noon to two o'clock. Our purchasing director, Kyle Colapanis, will have a brief presentation that will explain how to become a county vendor, and this is very important, that if you have a business out there and you wanna do business with the county, this is an opportunity to become a vendor. The county is one of the largest companies, if you will, as far as spending in the Miami Valley, and we'd love to have an opportunity for your business to be a partner with our business. So we continue to do outreach in all walks of communities throughout Montgomery County. Attendees will have a chance to meet some of the people who will help you with this process, so you don't have to try to maneuver this in the application yourself. We'll have a team of people there to do it for you. We'll also share insight on several projects that are open for bid and, or that soon will be open for bid, so that you have an opportunity to get in part of the bid process. Again, that's Thursday, this Thursday, at the Business Solutions Center, fourteen thirty-five Cincinnati Street, from noon to two P M. There's no need to register, just simply show up. And we truly hope that women-owned, minority-owned, veteran-owned, take advantage of this opportunity. This is a key prong for the commissioners, that we, that we make sure that we're spending across the community and the administration. So please, if, at all time, if you have the time, come out and be a part of this learning process. Thank you, commissioners.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, I am going to, I'm wearing green for a reason today. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and so we have a proclamation. I won't read the entire proclamation, but the three of us do take it seriously. This is a real issue, not only in our community, our county, but across the nation and honestly, across the world. So I'll read a few tenets of it, but we are making attempts here within our organization to improve the dialogue on it to begin with. So I think a lot of these points will support what we're trying to do, starting within our organization. So mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. All Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. There is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenged and protect their health and well-being. So anyone that's having it, there are some tools out there, and we wanna hook them up. Mental health conditions are real, and they are prevalent. Each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizens share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. So the three of us are proclaiming that this month within Montgomery County, we are also affirming that this is Mental Health Month in Montgomery County. And to our employees, you'll start to see more discussion about it. And I can just say to our own employees and anyone watching in your organizations, the first step is to realize that it's real and that it's no different than physical health. It is, it is mental health, and it should be viewed. There should not be a stigma. We need to stop the stigma of not being able to talk about it. Any of our employees who are experiencing that, and we know a lot are, and COVID only made it worse. Inflation makes things worse for, there's many things happening right now that make it worse. Turn to someone that you trust to help you find resources. And that, you know, our supervisors, or your peers, whoever it is that you trust, sharing it can go a long way to helping you to get, take that first step. So that's all I'll say about it. But we'll probably have things throughout the month to reinforce all the tools that are available. But it's serious, it's important, and we all need to play our part in stopping the stigma and supporting anyone you know who's going through difficult times. We do not need to lose another soul to mental health when there's actual resources out there to deal with it. So, on, that's a serious note. The other comment I wanted to make is a more celebratory note, and that I really wanna do a big shout-out to a local team that just won its tenth consecutive national title. And I'm speaking, of course, of the Oakwood High School Academic Decathlon Team, which again, won the Division Three Championship. The United States Academic Decathlon National Competition featured forty-eight U.S. teams in a four-day virtual event. Interviews, tests, and speeches were all included in the scoring. Oakwood's nineteen members won fifty-five medals in the competition's individual areas, and they earned over seven thousand dollars in scholarship funds. And we often celebrate sports, as we should. In this case, we are really supporting just knowledge and academic achievement. So the three of us and all of Montgomery County says, way to go, Oakwood. That is really an achievement that we are so proud of all of you.
Yep. That's great. That is great. So we also had some exciting news last week from the county engineer's office. Last week, the National Association of County Engineers bestowed the two thousand twenty-one Project Manager of the Year to their very own, our very own, Joe Dura. That is a big deal. That is great. Do you wanna tell a little bit more about it?
It was very exciting. We knew, we knew who was nominated. He was the, our state association forwarded his nomination to the National Association, but we didn't know until they announced it at the banquet, who had won, so.
And you were in Buffalo? Is that where you were?
We were in beautiful Buffalo in New York.
Beautiful Buffalo. No, Lake Effects Snow though, last week was there.
Just, it spit snow all day one day. And the people from California were amazed. But, yeah, I'm very proud of Joe. He did a great job. It was regarding the Third Street Bridge project, and he did a great job on it, and it was very, very deserving. And we were excited when he.
It sure is. The design of the Third Street Bridge, or as we like to call it also, the Peace Bridge, it's just beautiful. And now that it's warm, people can take some time and walk across. I did last week one day. It's just, it's so beautiful.
I encourage everyone to walk across it and read the tablets.
Read the tablets, you know.
More about Dayton than they ever knew before.
It's, it's a, it's history. You know, you walk across it. But I also want to add that a few weeks ago, the Association of Bridge Construction and Design, there's a whole association for that, presented Paul and his team with the two thousand twenty-one Outstanding Shortspan Roadway Bridge for our Peace Bridge. So, again, congratulations.
Yeah, we're also very happy about that.
Yeah, thanks for all the, all that you do. You know, we have, I think, probably some of the most beautiful bridges in the country, and you guys were a very big part of that. So thanks again for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Paul.
Yeah, congratulations. That's great. Remember, we were there for the, two times, for the ribbon cutting, and you first announced it, so.
Yeah, it's, it's beautiful.
Great. Well, I wanna add that it was wonderful to go by and participate on the brand-new Burkhart Branch of the Dayton Metro Library opening last week. You know, that's such a tremendous asset, not only to East Dayton, but to Riverside. Now, there's also gonna be another open house celebration for the West Branch of the Dayton Metro Library. It's gonna be tomorrow in West Dayton at three hundred Abbey Avenue from three to six. That's tomorrow, three hundred Abbey Avenue from three to six. So anyone that gets a chance to go out and see that, please do, because it's a wonderful, wonderful addition to our community. So I just wanna congratulate both of those brand-new libraries, and there's eighteen branches with convenient access for all of our Montgomery County residents, right here in Montgomery County. So, congratulations.
They are so beautiful, our libraries. We have a few more coming online, I know.
Aren't they down to less two?
Yeah, the one up in Northmont.
Yeah.
That's coming along, and then Huber. Yeah, it's great. Well, Trotwoods is on.
So three more?
Yeah.
Trotwoods in construction now.
Yeah, Trotwoods in construction. It's, it's the first of the three, and then Englewood, Clayton, Northmont, and then Huber. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Great.
Well, any other business? If not, I will.
The commissioners, pastors are here. I think they wanted to say a few words.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. We did see you.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Come on up.
We are here once again, where we celebrate our National Day of Prayer. And I, I just heard a date that the Cobert gave Thursday, starting at twelve noon.
That's correct.
That's our date and time for the National Day of Prayer.
Same time.
Same time.
Okay, okay.
Same time. So, but, but we're here. We, we come every year to highlight this time that we, as a nation, shares together. We give you just a brief overview of the night, in seventeen seventy-five, when our nation was being founded. They found the need to set aside time for the nation to go down in prayer. And in nineteen fifty-two, the nation was going into turmoil and with regards to war and things that was going on, they set aside a time for prayer. And in nineteen eighty-eight, President then Ronald Reagan set aside a time and a date for prayer. And that was the first Thursday in May. But, but this year, we are moving a little bit farther, instead of just taking just that one hour, it's from twelve to one at Courthouse Square. We are now expanding. Normally, it'd be the City Gates Ministry of Miami Valley that's be sponsoring this. But this year, we've reached back, because the City Gates Ministry is getting a little up in the age. So we decided that we would look back and we would, we would reach back to some of the youth that's within our community. And that where we bring in our friend and our brother, Brother Caleb Ingram of the Declare Ministry in, in Dayton and around Miami Valley, to co-sponsor with us in the National Day of Prayer. You guys are all invited to come down and share with us. We always receive a proclamation from you guys, and we appreciate that. And, and many of you have attended, and, and we appreciate that also. And on that note, I'm gonna allow Brother Caleb to give you an overview of what else is gonna be going on in the city. I apologize. We don't have that many, so you guys are gonna have to share, okay? So if you would, we'll.
Brother Caleb?
Sure, and I, I can keep this brief, but hey, it's been such an honor to be able to partner with Pastor Jackson and Joe and the City Gates Ministry, and I honor the work they've been doing for several decades of seeing churches across race denomination surf together, pray together, bless the community together. And I wanna thank many of you for the opportunity we have to work together in responding to the tornadoes and so much debris removal. A number of the churches were able to play a partnering role in that, as well as food distribution after COVID. There's so many great things that happened, but I think all of us get to a certain point where we realize the job ahead of us is bigger than ourselves. And so while I recognize we may come from different faith traditions here, our encouragement is, let's call upon God this Thursday and ask Him for help. So we'll be at Courthouse Square at twelve noon, as they mentioned, but you can go to DaytonPrayer.org, and there's a number of other opportunities around the county, in Englewood, Vandalia, even outside the county. So you can go there, and there's plenty of opportunities to be praying together. And if you can't make it in your own personal life as you drive home today, you can call out to someone who's bigger than us to carry your problems. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you, pastors. Thank you so much. And, and every year, you come and you remind us and get us ready for that prayer, and I appreciate it. And Caleb, the work that you and Declare do is just beyond. We have been so fortunate to get to know you because of the tornadoes, but you continue to give, and, and your, and your group continues to give, and we're really appreciative for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pastor and Brother Caleb, I wanna tell you, we didn't know, I, I knew you were here, 'cause I said something coming in, but I'm glad you, you got up and said something, because myself and the commissioners were just doing a reentry event up at the Montgomery County E O C, our new center that's up at West Town. And we were just talking about how with, you know, the tornadoes and war and everything that's going on, we need to get everybody in the game. We, you don't wanna have the luxury of, you know, having whole populations outside of the workforce. So this really dovetails with what you're talking about. So thank you, thank you so much for reminding us of the prayer day. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
God bless you guys.
All right. So our next Montgomery County Commission meeting will be held next Tuesday, May tenth, at one thirty P M. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a wonderful week.